Nationally, these programs are all over the country. Each state has a different coordinating program. They're all run slightly differently. Washington probably has one of the strongest, backed with some tax credit incentives that we're going to talk about a little bit too. These committees are our four points. So Economic Vitality focuses on capital incentives and other economic financial tools to assist new and existing businesses. This is one of our front-facing committees. So you see us doing historic walking tours. You see Ignite. You see our Entrepreneur Workshop and Pitch Competition, which we will also talk a little bit more in depth about. Our second front-facing committee is our Promotion Committee. That's the one you see doing pub crawls and wine walks and Old Fashioned Halloween, Santa House. So that is very much our like tourism and visitor-centered committee. Our Design Committee is a little bit more in the background, but works a lot on our historic preservation components. We talk a lot about inventory of our historic buildings, how to enhance storefronts, what they look like and bringing them up to look a little bit better. Organization in Washington State is also called Outreach, so we kind of use them interchangeably within our organization. This committee really works on volunteers and organizing volunteers, cultivating those partnerships, building that community involvement, and working on funding for the organization as a whole. I want to go through our vision and our mission statement for downtown. Our vision for downtown is a growing community that residents and visitors embrace as a historically significant and diverse destination, full of thriving, unique businesses, art, and experiences. Our mission as a whole, as an organization, is to cultivate a vibrant social, cultural, and economic center by bringing together the community nonprofits and city-centered stakeholders while celebrating the unique historic character of Renton's Downtown. We've broken up this year into a couple different segments. So we're already through our early 2023 and have been in the process of hosting a business workshop and working on getting some new locations open in downtown in spring, which honestly starts today. We're working on more public events. So you'll see our first pub crawls. Our first cleanup will be really early April, looking to bring some new people into downtown, longtime residents that maybe haven't been downtown in a while. We're kind of noticing that online a lot when we post a photo of like, oh, I didn't know that was down there. We're re-inviting the public back down to downtown. With a significant focus on family and children, this will be part of our explanation in our next slide too, as we talk about transformation strategies. We're really looking to provide promotion for these upcoming events for the whole year. That's been something that has fallen on the wayside through COVID. We've seen a lot of activities, a lot of events, but not well in advance. So this year, our calendar is completely full with dates and times, and all of those things are public and already up and being promoted. So we're excited about that. During the summer, we'll start those wine walks. We'll introduce the public to new businesses with the goal of rotating those locations. So the goal is that people are walking into a business they've never been into because they're on a wine walk and that they're hopefully coming back to use those services in the future. We're pushing for big engagement with corporate groups, Boeing and PACCAR and some of these larger organizations. We're working with them on our cleanup efforts. We're really making some progress with getting organized for cleanups. We received a pretty significant grant from First Financial and have bulk purchased grabbers that we'll be giving away at the first cleanup on April 1st. So the goal is putting those tools into people's hands that are interested in helping get downtown cleaned up. Okay, and then in fall, we'll be working on informing the public about locations for shopping local as our holidays begin. We're looking at having a shopping guide that's promoted well in advance of the holidays and hosting our largest event of the year, which is Old Fashioned Halloween, with again, that significant focus on families and children. November is our by far busiest month. We're doing a gobble-wobble wine walk, Small Business Saturday. We're doing a last hurrah cleanup before it gets cold out, and we're going to launch all of our promotion for 2024 and our plans after our October Board Retreat. In December, we run a longstanding event called Santa House. It runs three Saturdays in a row. We invite the public to a free event, and the goal is showing off those plans. And here's what the goal is for the next year, for 2024. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about transformation strategies and what that means and what I'm talking about when I say that. This is something Main Street America came up with a couple years ago now. Their transformation strategy is a foundation of the Main Street approach. It is the singular overarching statement that describes our method to revitalize and strengthen Renton's Downtown District. So right now, we're a fairly new organization, fairly young organization. So we have all of our committees meeting as those committees, meeting as design organization, et cetera. In the future, we'll start to see a lot of those committee projects or projects in general being split off into more overlapping versions where promotion and organization are working together. And that's where you start to see a little bit more of that cohesion. So we're well on our way to that. I would suspect within the next year, we're probably going to see a lot of those crossover committees. For that, we sat down with our board. We collected a ton of data. We asked around. We took surveys. We really got some information on what what do we already have downtown that we'd like to highlight? What is the audience that we're either primarily seeing or we'd like to see down here? And then what are things that are needed in downtown? So we went through, Main Street America gives you like 19 catalysts that you can kind of weed through. You can recombine or add your own, but they give you a good place to start from. So we went through those as individuals, and then we broke off into our committees. And then we came back as a group, and this is where we've landed. So for this year, for any event or project that we're working on, we're looking to have at least one of these three components involved in that. So entertainment, arts, and dining, families, or health, sports, and recreation, or all three. The goal is all three, but that doesn't always work out with some of these projects. So as we look at the things that we're moving forward with this year, keep those in mind that there's a component, even if it's like a pub crawl. Maybe there's a children's component that we're looking to add into that project. So I doubt that this room is not aware of our demographics in Renton, but I'm going to go through them anyway. Renton Downtown Partnership is well positioned to meet the changing needs of the community and continue to grow and thrive. Through its efforts to bring people together, this organization is helping to build a stronger, more cohesive community that is better able to address the challenges of the future. So Renton has like around 106,000, 109,000, depending on who you ask, residents within the city. We're seeing, we see around 21,000 people within five minutes of downtown driving. So we have a, we have a big area. That's not even including like our larger metropolitan sprawling, you know, ability to pull those people into downtown. So when we break this down just within the downtown area, like five minutes walking distance, we see around 10,000 households and almost half of them are identifying as families. So we really want to see that foot traffic increase from our residential, both north and south of downtown. And we're working on that and the safety component that comes with those things. So we're really starting to encourage people to be walking, to park in the garage and walk to businesses. We do that as a board. We've had lots of conversations about that. But we're seeing that, we're seeing that start to happen and that cross flow with businesses exchanging customers and going to different locations than they maybe would have in the past. So I want to go through each committee and like what they're working on this year. So Promotion Committee is going to be our first one. We're going to do two different pub crawls. The first one is celebrating Erasmus's Hatching Month, and that's going to be April 2nd. So coming right up. And we're also teaming up with the city for River Days. And we're going to be doing a pub crawl on that Friday. The Lucky Duck Pub Crawl that will have a children's component where they get to participate, not in the drinking part, but in the scavenger hunt component. We'll do two wine walks that are now branded this year. So we're going to do a sip and strut wine walk with, in conjunction with Renton Pride. We're going to do a Harvest and Wine Wine Walk, and then we'll do a gobble-wobble wine walk, which is a new event from last year. Old Fashioned Halloween, we've discussed a little bit. Santa House, we've discussed a little bit. Small Business Saturday is a national holiday at this point, and we're really excited to be going at that a little bit of a different direction. I mean, really focusing on the brick and mortar businesses downtown and really trying to get people into those locations. Our goal for the year in Promotion Committee is to increase the attendance of our current events, promote upcoming events early, and introduce new visitors to downtown Renton. Our questions that we answer within this committee are how do we attract more customers to the district? Are the vacant spaces in the district being adequately marketed or represented? Do we work with a commercial broker or a real estate expert to help with this? Do the businesses within the district need assistance with social media or digital marketing? This is a very broad committee. They do a lot of work, a lot of good work. Outreach Committee, I was working on that, Volunteer Management and Administration. We do fundraising within this committee, so you might have seen flower baskets or poinsettias in the past. We're looking at some ornaments this year. Main Street America has a national accreditation that is not required here in the state of Washington in order to receive the tax incentive program, but it is something that is nationally recognized and pretty like awesome to have. So we are working on seeing if we can get close to that accreditation here. It's probably not this year, but likely next year. This committee also works on sponsorships and donor recognition and strategic plan updates. The goal for this committee is to recruit and manage RDP volunteers and create a sustainable fundraising plan that incorporates the Main Street BNO Tax Credit Incentive Program and work on needed items to achieve Main Street accreditation nationally. So the questions this committee answers are, are the reinvestment statistics that we're collecting, are they accurate? Are we collecting this information efficiently? Is the program in need of additional volunteers? Yes, we are. How can we increase the number of volunteer hours for the program? Does the program's operational budget support the needs of the district? And does our mission statement or strategic plan need updating? All right, our Design Committee is one of those ones that's a little bit more in the background, but man, they do a ton of work. We work on flower baskets, like within the hanging baskets downtown. We're working on a really cool mural on a secret spot until we are ready to announce it, but it's going to be really neat. We're working on art tours, so walking the district and showing off our murals, the hydrants, all the art within downtown. We're also working on a Historic Resources Tour. We're working on facade grants. The goal for this committee is to highlight the unique art and architecture, activate historic and art activities, and hire consultant for, we've actually changed this from the King County Historic Designation to the National Historic Designation. There's a little bit less of that like design review oversight stuff that we're really looking to avoid right now. And to open funding options for buildings in need of repair. We have a number of historic buildings that are going to need some substantial repair with a lot of money behind them. So we'd like to get that federal money moving or at least be eligible for it within downtown. And that's something that will open up if we go through this process. It's a number of years. So this is like the very beginning of that longer process with that eligibility. Okay, so the questions that this committee answers are, are the vacant retail spaces in the organization's boundaries tenant-ready? And if not, what can we do to help improve and market those spaces? Are there local artists that can help design storefronts, signage, marketing material? How can we help generate additional investment in the community? Are there buildings in the organization's area that need to be rehabbed? And if so, how can the organization help advocate for these buildings and find investors? This committee does a lot of heavy lifting, but is mostly on the background. So I really try to talk about them a little bit more. They're harder to promote to the outside. All right, Economic Vitality is probably one of our busiest committees. They're doing a ton of stuff this year. Our Entrepreneur Workshop and Pitch Competition is probably the biggest impact for the moment. I'm going to talk a little bit more about specifically that event in the next slide. They also run Ignite Meetings, which stems from, or ranges from everything from like security and safety to like how to improve your storefront, how to take a look at it from, from a different view. We also run historic walking tours through this committee. So we identified historic spots, buildings that were significant, and we tour around downtown. We take around 25-ish people on two different tours, two different times a year. No, twice, twice on the same day. We do quite a few of these. And then we're going to do those art tours on the same day. So you could do a historic walking tour in the morning and an art tour in the afternoon. This is also the committee that's running those quarterly cleanups. We're really starting to see a lot of interest in this, which I'm really happy to say. We were pretty close to like being on maintenance level with trash downtown in the fall. So we have not done one of these, I think, since late November. So we're back to like, there's quite a bit of trash on the ground downtown. So we're looking forward to April 1st and getting that off the ground. The goal for this committee is to build a working entrepreneur ecosystem in downtown Renton and assist businesses in finding spaces for their concepts, encourage property owners to lease or sell spaces to activate the downtown. Our questions that we answer in this committee are, how can we create or sustain jobs in the community? How can we help bring new businesses to the area? And are businesses seeing an increase or decrease in customer traffic? And then how would we address those? Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about the Entrepreneur Workshop and Pitch Competition. It is really awesome. Frankly, this has been like, this is, I'm going to just recognize really quickly. Sue Bolinger has taken this concept and run with it. This is in partnership with the city and with the Port of Seattle, a grant that was received. So we have $30,000. We have, our first evening, we had 67 registered businesses participating. We had 93 people in attendance total. That included 10 mentors that get paired up with the businesses. It included some speakers. We had a networking component. Kenny brought some delicious chicken. There was a whole bunch of stuff going on at the same, all at the same time, but these are, it's six courses, marketing, financial, the whole works. They go through all these courses, and at the end of it, they're going to do a pitch. They compete in their category. So we have early established and startup as the categories. If they win in their category, they get $5,000 outright just to work on their business. If they sign a lease downtown within six months, they get another $5,000. So it's really like, how many barriers can we lower? How quickly can we get you to open your business? And what can we do to make that happen? In addition, if they go through those courses, they will receive from us their paid business license for the city and their license for the state. So we're trying to make sure that everyone coming out of this is coming out with all of their paperwork ready to go. The amount of content that these participants are getting is like thick. Every single class is, they're getting quite a lot of information, a lot of, you know, here is the form that you need to fill out, this one, and here's how you do that. So I want to talk a little bit about like demographics that we're seeing at this too. So we see a pretty even split between men and women, quite a few more women than, not quite a few, some more women than men. We've got quite a few BIPOC businesses. So this has been kind of an interesting, like, we didn't really target anyone in particular for this event. We just really wanted to see what would happen if we just tried it. And we got a full range of applicants, so it's been really cool to see. Our goals and our next steps with this project in particular is to lower as many barriers as possible. We want to streamline the entrepreneurial ecosystem in Renton. We are working currently on an inventory of locations that are for lease or for sale in downtown. Not only where are they, but like contact info, square footage, what the price is looking like for the owner. And then we're looking to place those businesses within those storefronts and gaps. With that, so we're looking at some concepts of with pop-ups, maybe having us lease a space. And then we work with those businesses to pop up, maybe working with existing businesses to have longer-standing pop-up concepts. We're exploring a couple different options that I'm sure you'll hear about in the next couple months. We're going to continue our data collection on this too, so we want to know where these businesses end up, whether that's Renton or not. I want to know if they ended up opening in Kent or somewhere else. If Renton can become known as like the place where you can go find new businesses to open, that's a pretty cool achievement too. Okay, so I won't harp on that anymore. I want to talk a little bit about our funding plan for RDP and how like the BNO tax credit portion works and what that means, what I mean when I say that. So Washington Main Street has a $5 million pot for their 40-something Main Streets to pull from. They cap their first quarter at 170,000 in donations. So every Main Street approaches this differently. I have been surveying directors and other Main Streets for like two months now, asking how they do this. So smaller locations, cities with 500 people or so do it like 100, 500 bucks at a time, a whole long list. Bigger cities like Vancouver, they have a list of like five. They have their city, and they got four big companies that do a huge amount for their BNO. It's not just BNO, it's PUT taxes too, so public utilities. So there's an opportunity for there to be some input from the city on that. And basically what happens is the amount that is donated, there's a 75% return in a tax credit for those donors. So we're working on that. In quarter one, we had hoped to be at five major donors. We are not there. That's okay. Quarter two, we're looking to be moving in that direction. We're really working on those bigger relationships with the bigger companies so we can start to move in that direction. But as the year progresses, we'll probably start working on some of those mid-sized companies and working down the line. So that's our, that's our funding like plan and how it's going to be set up for the year. And I'm hoping we'll keep the city informed on where we're at with it all, but keeping in mind that PUT, I want to make sure you guys know that that exists. So our future is looking bright. We're really excited about how it's all going to play out this year. We have 17 events. We have a full schedule aimed at bringing locals and visitors alike to the downtown core. We have 10-plus projects. We've selected projects that will continue to activate and highlight the downtown throughout the year. And we have the opportunity to have funding up to 213,000 through the BNO and PUT Tax Credit Incentive Program. So there is a lot of opportunity here within our organization. We've come a long way in the year I've been here, and we're really excited. My board is really excited. They all showed up. They gotta be excited, right? If you have any questions or if there's things I can answer, I'm happy to do that. I'll give you back your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions? Yes.
So great presentation and a lot of good stuff going on. I marked every place in the presentation that tied to this question last week in our council retreat. One of the things that came up and one of the things I see is a prime, a major impediment to a lot of this stuff are the building owners, the landlords that just aren't doing a doggone thing. I put that nicely. But I see, you know, you have inventory for lease sale, donations, and businesses in vacant storefronts, and there are different committees that kind of deal with that, the ones especially working in the background. I'm curious to know what kind of conversations I've had, have you had about that? What kind of maybe creative solutions, what kind of brick walls? Can you address that a little bit as it relates to really, you know, realizing the plans that you have?
Yes. Okay, so one of the biggest issues with any downtown is gaps. So we have quite a few vacant locations within downtown. We have a lot of third-generation ownership where they don't live here anymore. And so they're just not, they're not concerned with that property, right? So we have tried in the last, probably the last six months, we've really made some progress with using a carrot approach. And like, here's how we plan to fill your space. Here's what, here's some options for businesses to go in there. We've had some unresponsive building owners, but not all. So for the moment, we are targeting those empty locations. If a business is operating and open in a building, we're leaving all that alone for the moment. So code enforcement is definitely a tool that we're probably going to head to using as we, as we look at buildings that are not responding or have overgrown weeds and graffiti or whatever the issues are that are causing a blight. It's not always the tactic of Main Street, but we have, we're at the point where I have a list of businesses that would like to open downtown and can't find a spot. So that's, we're at the point where like, we need that encouragement and like the people that own these buildings to recognize that there are some opportunities to put tenants in. And I understand the cost of putting a tenant in. There's some, you know, added cost for that. But we, we seem to be headed in a direction that that's going to work, I think.
So you're seeing movement?
We are seeing movement. It's taken some time, but we are seeing movement. Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question. I have asked you this in the past, but wanted to ask again. In terms of the designation of the jurisdiction of downtown Renton, we've talked about Safeway not being a part of the Renton Downtown jurisdiction, right? Is it, first, who kind of put the jurisdiction together? Maybe it's us, but I don't know. And of course, how can we better support areas that are surrounding? So it's a two-part question. So surrounding the downtown, because of course downtown businesses are affected, right?
Yeah, that's actually a pretty common question. So when there's a Main Street organization that gets put into any city, they're like, well, can this also be included? The reality is, we have a smaller section, right, for the moment, to really build up and put as many businesses as, I would like to get us to like 98% occupancy would be the goal. And if that's happening, then we come back to the city and say, I think we're ready to kind of expand out a little bit. My goal would probably to be including Safeway and that entrance to downtown. It's definitely an issue that it's not part of it because there's a whole lot of stuff going on up there, right? So we would like to see the plan for, you know, expanding. But for the moment, we have enough things to work on within this area. If it gets too big, you're not being very effective. So that's really the answer is that they almost always try to start a Main Street small. And you guys did draw the lines. I didn't draw them. But they try to start them small on purpose. And Main Street initially started as extremely like a commercial business property only. So like our lines on this map you can see are like super funky. They've changed this around a little bit, so they're looking at community neighborhoods is what they call them now. So there is a lot more residential involved, a lot more residential conversations, that second floor occupancy and having apartments and all of those things. So affordable housing is a big conversation on the Main Street side too. So I would suspect that they'll start, we'll start to see some shifting on how you draw your lines within your Main Street moving forward. So I think we'd be open to a conversation if there's like sections that should be included. I think if we included Safeway in that area on either direction, that it would be too large for us for the moment, for the size of our organization.
Thank you again for an awesome presentation. I absolutely love the Renton Downtown Partnership and what y'all are doing for downtown. So thank you for everything that you all do and for being here tonight. I just wanted to drop on the pop-up shops. I saw actually today, and I don't know if you're aware of the City of Boffels program? That, okay, yeah, I was just going to say you should check out what the City of Boffel is doing with pop-up shops and what they've done with the city there.
I believe Sue met with Boffel this morning. Oh, we're meeting, yeah.
Awesome, awesome, yeah, because I think they have a really great program that's worth copying or maybe modifying. So, thank you.
Myself and then Danielle Smith from the Chamber is also on our board. Are headed to Boston for the Main Street Conference, the national conference. And that is like the name of the game at those conferences is like steal and repeat. So we will be taking lots of notes and we'll probably be coming back with some cool ideas.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Very well done. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for your work and your time and dedication. There are several things over your presentation that I really, really liked and others that I found extremely interesting. The second largest minority in Renton is the Latinx community. And the fact that demographics don't show them that they shop or visit downtown is kind of interesting to see why they don't find downtown a place to go. And I would like to know more about that later in the future to see how we can attract the Latinx community to our downtown core. But my question goes related to public safety concerns. We have heard loud and clear from your businesses and from the people that visit downtown that they don't feel safe in the area. During our last budget last year, we appropriated some funds to have two special police officers that will serve downtown Renton specifically. I want to know if the situation has improved from your business members as well as for the community? And if you guys are working as a community with the police department to keep improving whatever we can do in that area?
Those are excellent questions. So my understanding, it's actually four positions that were funded. My understanding is also that they are not filled yet, that the goal would be that they would be filled by next year. And I think that's more on a staffing level, but to bridge that gap between now and next year, they have put in something about like an approved overtime plan. You guys have put in an approved overtime plan and salary adjustment or something. There's something involved. So they, I have heard today that there was two, two police officers walking downtown, which was a new site for, I think, the majority of our businesses down there. You asked me if we've seen an increase- Um, you asked me if we've seen an increase in safety? No. Have we seen a decrease in safety? No. So we're holding steady for the moment. We've had, you know, broken windows, quite a few break-ins. Um, we're focusing on solutions that are outside of that, like enforcement, um, side. Like as an organization, we're working on, okay, the more buildings that are filled, the more people that are down here. The more people that are down here, the more eyes on the street, the more people that use the parking garage, the safer it is. All of those things are, are part of a solution, so we're not like the solution for that. And we, we work with the police department, um, at any, at any opportunity. But no, the answer is we have not seen a, an increase or a decrease in, in crime and safety issues.
I have a follow-up question. Thank you. Um, I don't hear it too often, but sometimes I hear that people don't feel safe to go to downtown. Uh, and, and that's the reason why they don't go and eat or shop or because they don't know where to park or if they find out that they have a place to park, they don't want to walk all the way. I was at the pavilion this Saturday and I heard, overheard some people saying, wait for me, I don't want to walk alone anymore and it's around this area. And that really concerned me. And, uh, how much you heard about that, uh, about the public that don't want to come to downtown?
I hear that probably at least every day. Um, we have a lighting issue at night. We've been discussing that with a couple of different departments with the city and I think we're on our way to making some improvements there. Um, internally, we're making some improvements on that too. We've been working with PSE, we got a grant to do, um, some lighting, uh, installation on private property, so not the city's part. Um, so we're having those conversations with you guys frequently, parks and rec, talking about bushes and lowering some stuff. It's an issue. I mean, the, it's, it's a problem for, uh, attracting businesses here. Uh, that's not, it's not something that's exclusive to Renton. It's a systemic issue across our region. So, um, I look forward to those police positions being filled and having, uh, community officers that are on the, on the streets and visible. Um, I look forward to that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have two questions, but I'll just kind of, uh, answer, um, Councilmember Perez's question. We actually had a briefing by the chief and, uh, our deputies in terms of the downtown patrol district unit. So yay, we got it. Um, we started it today, so thank you.
Yes.
To our Renton PD, and that's why you probably noticed two officers there. Uh, and the information is that it's, there'll be two officers, uh, from Monday through Saturday and we definitely have, uh, more information on that and go offline. Um, but my questions, other two questions are, um, one is about the funding. As you mentioned, these are your goal and, um, not having met quarter one goal. Um, how can we help? Certainly, um, the future looks bright, but how can we as council support in that? Um, and when you say the goal of five major donors, um, is that per quarter? Or is that just quarter one to kind of, you can kindly elaborate on that?
Well, so we have never gone through this, um, because we just got this designation. So we made up our goals and I think we should have adjusted them a little bit, looking back. So that would be my answer is, uh, the city is, uh, extremely helpful in connecting us with businesses. It's really just getting to the right person who understands the taxes, um, for these businesses. And that's, that's where we're at. We're just stalled out a little bit on the relationship side. But we're working on it and it's getting closer each time we talk to somebody. Um, the only thing I would ask for the city, uh, we're working this out in the background, trying to figure out how it works, like how the city of Vancouver contributes to its Main Street through that P U T tax. If we get to a point where that makes sense for Renton, we'll, I'll probably be back here and talking to you more about that.
My other question, if that's okay. Um, I know in terms of demographic for data for the workshop attendees, um, and you weren't intending to target any population, but of those, um, were you able to track veteran, uh, if any? Just curious.
We did not, and we did not do, we, there were a few things with this, uh, event that we would have done differently. But having never done it before, we were just sort of shooting in the dark. So, uh, no, we didn't track that. We will probably do quite a bit more like demographic collection next time.
I mean, it's great without even targeting and I was there and I really, y'all are also doing a great job. Thank you, Sue, and thank you to you and your team.
I don't think I mentioned too, that the final pitch is on April eighteenth and we would love to formally invite city council to come to that. Um, we're really looking forward to having a pretty successful evening.
You said that was April eighteenth?
April eighteenth, and it's at the Renton Civic Theater at six.
And then to, uh, piggyback on these great demographic questions, and I'm sorry if I missed this, it's a lot of great information, so I do apologize. When it goes back to slide nine on tracking those demographics, and thank you, Councilmember Perez, for bringing it up, because I also noticed a Hispanic and Latino wasn't on there. How is this demographic being, data being tracked? Because I'm Hispanic and Latino and I definitely know I go to your events.
I, so this is Esri data and it's not who is coming to our events. It is who is in the surrounding, uh, residential. So it's a five-minute walk to like, I think I used the pavilion as like our center point. And that's the information that Esri provides. So if it's not accurate, that's one of our questions we answer, so please tell me if that's not the case.
I don't live five minutes away. That actually terrifies my question.
That might be some of like, that's a separation between like, we're missing a demographic though.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up and thank you for answering my question.
Anything else from the council?
What was that date again?
April eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay.
May I ask you if you sent us a?
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we thank you very kindly for all of your hard work. We thank you for taking the time to come and present to us this evening. And, uh, I look forward to putting April the eighteenth on my calendar.
Thank you for having us.
Yep, thank you.